Is there anyone in attendance in need of special assistance to see, hear, or participate in these proceedings? Please take note of the hearing procedures on the screen. I will submit my written decision within five business days of this hearing. And at this time, I'd like to leave the room in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Are there any changes to the agenda? Any announcements? Are there any corrections to the August 2nd, 2023 hearing minutes? No? Okay. Then I declare them approved. Okay. So we are going to start today with... Let me try to read this right. We are going to start with file CUP 0010-23, a conditional use permit for an animal establishment. The applicants are requesting a conditional use permit for an animal establishment. The property is six acres. The property is zoned AF10. The project is located off Cougar Loop in Section 18 Township 55 North Range 3 East, Boise Meridian, and I have no conflict of interest with this project.
Thank you. Sorry. Just a minute. We're having some technical difficulties.
No, now!
Okay. There you go. You ask, you shall receive.
Perfect.
We're here to discuss file CUP 0010-23 for an animal establishment. I'd like to, but my computer isn't allowing it. Sorry. Anyway, back to the presentation. These are the applicable standards for which this CUP was reviewed against, as found in the staff report. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit for an animal establishment. The proposal is located on Cougar Loop in Clark Fork. Proposal is currently developed with a single-family dwelling without buildings. The parcel is currently zoned AF10, where animal establishments are conditionally allowed. A little background on this parcel is currently unplatted. The size of the parcel is six acres and is zoned AF10. Land use designation is ag forest land. Access, as mentioned, is on Cougar Loop, which is a privately owned and maintained 60-foot gravel easement. This is a look at the commercial ease table in our revised code 12-333. Where those arrows are pointing, we can see in AF District, animal establishments are conditionally allowed so long as they're meeting notes 1, 2, and 3. So reviewing those notes, looking at number 1, it says that the establishment for the animals needs to be at least 300 feet away from an existing residential building. Currently, the proposed building is located approximately 150 feet away from the adjacent residence. The applicant has asked for a deviation from that 300 feet to be 150 feet. The neighbor to the east that's affected by this deviation has written a letter of support of this proposal, and that's in the folder this afternoon. So note 2 is where access needs to be within a recorded easement or public right-of-way so it can provide emergency vehicles and access to the parcel. The applicant was able to provide information from the Clark Fork Fire and Rescue that they will serve this property in case of emergency and felt that that Cougar Loop was constructed to provide emergency access in case of some type of event up there if their services were needed. So looking at note 3, it should be within recorded easement or public right-of-way and constructed to meet the private road standards or Title 2. Cougar Loop is a 60-foot wide core easement, has varying widths, anywhere from 20 feet wide, where low-valium private road standard is approximately 22 feet for the road and the travel width should be at least 20. So it is meeting that standard. These are the other standards that the proposal was reviewed against and was meeting, and there was no deviation request to these standards. These are the following agencies that were routed for comment on this project. Idaho Department of Water Resources and Idaho Department of Environmental Quality submitted letters of comment that are in the folder this afternoon. All our agencies did not respond. There were no public comments received for this proposal. And that concludes my presentation. I would take any questions you may have.
I don't have any. Thank you. Okay. Would the applicant like to make a presentation?
I don't actually.
Great. Okay. All right. So at this time, I'm going to read the rules of testimony. If you wish to testify, you will need to please state your name for the record. Public testimony is limited to three minutes per person. You may give your three minutes to another person so they have up to six minutes to speak. No one will be allowed more than six minutes. Public comments are limited to the specifics of this application only. If you agree with another speaker, please just acknowledge agreement. No need to repeat the information again. Any personal or derogatory comments about another person or their position will not be allowed. Clapping, cheering, or booing will not be allowed either. Is there anyone that has a written statement that they would like to enter into the record? Is there supporting public testimony in person or online? Any neutral public testimony in person or online? Opposing testimony in person or online? And you don't have anything to rebut? That's awesome! Okay. Is there anyone in the audience who did not sign up to speak that would like to enter comments into the record? Okay. All right then, I am going to close this hearing to public testimony on this file. Okay. So as it stated, this parcel is zoned AF10 Agriculture/Forestry, but it does allow animal establishments to be conditionally permitted. And I found several things on this that I actually thought were positive about this application, the access especially, being Cougar Loop privately owned and maintained. I appreciated the Clark Fork Fire Marshal Louis John's letter stating that it's a well-maintained road, has good access for fire equipment to use. That is very important considering that you will be having people coming up and down the road retrieving animals, and they want to know that if they leave their critters there, they're going to be okay. And I felt that your site plan was also very well laid out to show that that is your intent to take care of those critters and be a good caregiver. No issues were raised by the neighbors regarding impact rights or impact to their property rights. And I also found that the young's support of the deviation to the code that required the establishment be from 300 feet to down to plus or minus 150 feet away was a positive note for this application. Um, let's see what else. I also think it's a really great way to support the economic development out here, which is part of what we look at with these kind of applications for the comprehensive plan. The economic development in those smaller areas is important, and I think that this is one of those opportunities to develop that, but you're not doing any negative impact to the ruralness of the area, which I really liked about this application. Okay. So having said that, long-winded way. All right. So I approve this file, this project, file CUP 0010-23 for an animal establishment, finding that it is in accord with the general and specific objectives of the Bonner County Comprehensive Plan and Bonner County Revised Code as enumerated in the following conclusions of law and based upon the evidence submitted up to the time the staff report was prepared and testimony received at this hearing. Those conclusions of law being: Conclusion 1, the proposed conditional use permit is in accord with the Bonner County Comprehensive Plan. Conclusion 2, this proposal was reviewed for compliance with the criteria and standards set forth, et cetera, et cetera. And conclusion 3, the proposed use will not create a hazard or will not be dangerous to persons on or adjacent to the property. And I lost my spot. I further adopt the findings of... Oops, I said that already. I'm going to say it again. I further adopt the findings of fact and conclusions of law as set forth in the staff report and direct planning staff to draft written findings and conclusions to reflect this decision and transmit to all interested parties. The action that could be taken to obtain the conditional use permit is to complete the conditions of approval as adopted. This action does not result in the taking of private property. Okay. So at this time, I close file CUP 0010-23. All right. Moving on. Okay. Our next... So thank you very much. Have a good day. Safe travels. Okay. All right. So moving on to file V0024-22, a variance bulk and shoreline setback. The applicants are requesting a bulk and shoreline setback variance to reconstruct an existing boathouse to allow for standing room throughout the structure. The property is approximately 0.9 acres and is zoned Forest 40F. The project is located off Clambake Road in Section 22 Township 60 North Range 4 West, Boise Meridian, and I have no conflict of interest with this file. So I turn it over to the staff. Okay.
Thank you, Hearing Examiner. Travis Howler, Planning Staff, for the record. Get this set up here. I apologize. Slightly different computer connection.
It's been one of those days. Don't worry.
And I can make me toast. Thank you. Thank you for your patience. Thank you to the public. Again, Travis Howler, for the record. Here to present a variance file V0024-22, Alice Boathouse variance. Jason Johnson, he was the planner who put this together. He was the one who ran this file, so I'm just presenting for him for the record. The applicant is Matthew Alice and the project representative Nicole Castillo. Costello. Thank you. So the request, the applicant is requesting a bulk and shoreline setback variance to reconstruct an existing boathouse to allow for standing room through the structure. So the noticing was mailed out July 18th of this year, site posting July 17th, and is published in the new newspaper July 18th. That's proposed site plan. You can see the existing boathouse there. The project summary, this is the residential lot. It is a platted lot. It is just under an acre at about nine-tenths of an acre. The zoning is Forest 40, and the comprehensive land use designation is remote ag forest. The access is provided by Clambake Road, and per the applicant, the following regarding Clambake Road is it is an existing private gravel access road, and it is approximately eight feet wide with a 30-foot right-of-way access easement. The services, water was not specified in the application. Sewer is Coolin Sewer District. Fire is provided by Coolin Cavanaugh Bay Fire District. Power again was not provided by the applicant and the school district is Bonner County 83. This is the aerial view of the project site. You can see Clambake Road going through it. The zoning, apparently didn't come through on the image. Apologize for that. The zoning on the left is Forest 40, and on the right is supposed to show remote ag forest for the land use designation. So some environmental features, the site does contain mapped slopes. Site does not contain mapped wetlands. It does front on the lake, and the lot is within the special flood hazard area, Zone X and Zone AE. Per flood, a flood plain development permit will be required following approval if approved of the proposed variance and prior to the start of any work of the proposed project. No further flood plain review was required at the time. Here are the slopes. This is our pretty standard where the no color is below 15% slopes. 15 to 30% slopes is in yellow, and anything greater than 30% slope is in red. The soils on the property, you can see it's just one, the brown, and that is the, I don't even know how to pronounce that. Kluch? Gravely sandy loam. These were the agencies that were routed, notified. The following agencies did comment, Department of Fishing Game, Idaho Department of Environmental Quality, and then Idaho Department of Water Resources. All others replied no comment. I think Jason meant to say that no other agencies actually commented, not, so that's what that means. Public comments were received, and all the comments from the agencies and the public are contained in the binder in front of you. The standards for review for a variance, the applicant is requesting a bulk and shoreline setback variance to reconstruct an existing boathouse to allow for standing room through the structure. The specific details of the requested bulk increase are actually given in the application submitted entitled "The Variance Application: Bulk Calculations." Generally, the applicant is requesting a building height increase of between 1 to 4 1/2 feet, a width increase of 1 foot, and a total building volume increase of 1,020 cubic feet, which is a 77% increase over the current structure. BCRC, Bonner County Revised Code 12-234 specifies that staff, the commission, and/or board shall review the particular facts and circumstances of each proposal submitted and shall find adequate evidence showing the following. There's three conditions. The first one is that conditions apply to the property that do not generally apply to other properties in the same zone or vicinity, which conditions are a result of lot size, shape, topography, or other circumstances over which the applicant has no control. The applicant specified that the property has an existing boathouse that is within 40 feet of the waterfront setback. Existing boat house is set at a Penn location as it is part of an existing boat rail track system. The existing boathouse is falling apart and needs to be reconstructed. However, the existing roof slopes from west to east against a steeply sloped property. Therefore, the height of the building at the back is too short to use, is approximately four feet tall. The applicant would like to construct a building of similar size with a consistent height from floor to ceiling by utilizing a pitched roof design. The building footprint dimensions are currently 11 feet by 20 feet. The applicant is proposing a new footprint of 12 feet by 20 feet. When reviewing this, staff commented that per BCRC 12-344, non-conforming structures that were built prior to November 18th, 2008 are considered legally non-conforming. The boathouse was not constructed by the applicant and was built before November 18th, 2008. However, 12-344A states that no such non-conforming use shall be enlarged or increased nor extended to occupy a greater area of land that was occupied at the effective date of adoption or amendment of this section, except where otherwise noted in the subchapter. Therefore, a variance is needed, and it does seem reasonable to reconstruct the boathouse in a manner that will allow a person to stand within the structure. The second condition, special conditions and circumstances do not result from the actions of the applicant. The applicant stated the boathouse was existing at the time of purchase, and the applicant would simply like to reconstruct the building so that it can be usable with a pitched roof that will also allow a person to stand up inside the structure. Staff in reviewing commented that the boathouse was not constructed by the applicant and was built prior to November 18th, 2008. The third condition, the granting of the variance is not in conflict with the public interest. The applicant stated that granting the variance will have no effect on adjoining property. In fact, the neighboring properties have boathouses that are significantly larger than what is being proposed. Therefore, the proposed structure would still conform to neighboring parcels. There is an existing structure at the proposed location for the same use. Therefore, there will be no change to the public health, safety, or welfare. There's no impact to others that is anticipated with this variance request. Staff in the review commented that this proposal does not have any apparent detrimental effects to the public health, safety, or welfare, nor does it appear to be materially interest to properties or improvements in the vicinity of the subject parcel or lot. Regarding the stormwater plan, a stormwater management or a grading erosion control plan will be required for the proposed project pursuant to BCRC 12-720.2. The plan will be submitted to and approved by the planning department prior to the start of any developer land distributing activities. This is also a condition of approval. Findings of facts, this is a platted lot. The lot is 0.9 acres in size. The lot is zoned Forest 40 with a remote ag forest land use designation. It's steeply sloped at the waterfront with frontage on Priest Lake, and the boathouse was not constructed by the applicant and was constructed prior to the November 18th, 2008. So staff concludes this project is consistent with Bonner County Revised Codes based upon the previous analysis and finding of facts and their recommended conditions of approval. Only the development highlighted on, as shown on the site plan, has been reviewed for variant standards. All their development standards shall comply. The granting this variance shall not supersede any deed restrictions. A stormwater management or grading erosion control plan will be required. The lot is within the special flood hazard zone area X and AE per those firm panels, and a flood plain development permit will be required if approved for this and building within the flood plain prior to the start of any work. And a building location permit shall be filed with the Bonner County Planning Department prior to any development on the property. That concludes my presentation. Take any questions.
I did have one on backup under the standard reviews under condition A. The staff quote of the BCRC 12-344, it's written, states no such conforming use shall be enlarged. I have a structure, not use. Am I reading the wrong one?
Are we talking about the code itself?
Yes.
I believe BCRC 12-344 does say non-conforming structures.
Okay. I just want to make sure I have the right one there.
Yeah, there's the quotations right there. No such non-conforming use shall be enlarged or increased.
Right. And I have it reading as no such non-conforming structure, because there is a section about use, but this is not. I don't think that applies here. I just wanted to make sure, is he talking about the structure or the use of the structure? But he's quoting the wrong one code anyway, the way he's got it.
Yeah. I'm not sure. I understand what you're saying. If you give me a few minutes to look into that, I can get back to you.
Yeah, that was one thing I just wanted to, but since he's not here to ask, I wasn't sure which one he was actually referring to.
Right. I know we do have a code that pertains to non-conforming.
That is quoted right from 12-344, and that's quoted word-for-word. So no such non-conforming structure shall, so the use is wrong on 344A.
So that...
It should be structure then. Okay. Okay. I'm going to assume that's what he meant then, that he's talking about the structure, not the use of the structure. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Jake. Jake, a bell for the planning record.
I think that was the only thing I noticed for questions, so thank you. Okay. Would the applicant like to make a presentation at this time?
Or the applicant's rep.
Or the applicant's rep, I'm sorry. Okay. If you, and I actually have questions for the representative anyway, so if you want to come up, or I guess...
Either one.
Either one, whatever works best for you.
Nicole Costello.
Okay.
My only comment was to say the actual existing building footprint is 12 feet by 20 feet. That's an error, so the footprint is not actually getting any larger. It's just the pitch of the roof that increases that bulk.
Okay. That does make a difference. Thank you. Okay. So that 11 foot is incorrect. Okay.
Yep. So 12 by 20 existing and 12 by 20 proposed.
Okay. One question I did have, though, you do state in your application that the existing boathouse is falling apart and needs to be reconstructed. Is there any evidence that you can show me of that? Or that you can speak to on that?
I mean, it has a...
Like, how are you determining that it's falling apart? I guess maybe that's my question.
A tarp is what's kind of being used as walls and roof at this time.
Okay. So a tarp is being used in lieu of the roof?
Well, it's...
Go ahead and state your name for the record, then we can both...
I'm Matthew Alice. I'm Matthew.
Okay.
And so then, yeah, we're using a tarp temporarily while we're waiting to get permission to construct a new building. It's not being used in lieu of the roof, but the roof is in such bad shape, it's been hit by trees, et cetera, so it leaks quite badly, so we put a tarp on it just to kind of keep everything a little drier inside. Also, as far as, I rebuilt the door back in, I don't know, 2006, somewhere around in there, and that is now, it doesn't close well, as well as it did when I built it. So it's leaning and stuff, so there's, you know...
The building has kind of settled and... Okay. Okay. Thank you. That's exactly what I was looking for. Okay. Great. Did you guys have anything else you'd like to add? No? Okay. All right. Well, since it's the same group of folks, I'm not going to reread the rules of testimony, if that's okay to everybody. I am going to ask if there is anyone that has a written statement that they would like to enter into the record. I guess it'll only be you guys or someone else. Is there any supporting public testimony in person or online?
Public hands raised, online.
Okay. Neutral public testimony in person or online? Opposing public testimony in person or online?
It's not being used in lieu of the roof, but the roof is in such bad shape, it's been hit by trees, et cetera, so it leaks quite badly, so we put a tarp on it just to kind of keep everything a little drier inside. Also, as far as I rebuilt the door back in, I don't know, 2006, somewhere around in there, and that is now, it doesn't close well, as well as it did when I built it. So it's, it's leaning and stuff, so there's, you know.
Like the building has kind of settled and, okay. Okay, thank you. That's exactly what I was looking for. Okay. Great. Did you guys have anything else you'd like to add? No? Okay. Okay. All right. Well, since it's the same group of folks, I'm not going to reread the rules of testimony, if that's okay to everybody. I am going to ask if there is anyone that has a written statement that they would like to enter into the record? I guess it'll only be you guys or someone else. Is there any supporting public testimony in person or online?
Public hands raised, online.
Okay. Neutral public testimony in person or online? Opposing public testimony in person or online? Nobody? Okay. Anyone in the audience who did not sign up to speak who would like to enter any comments into the record? Nope. Okay, so then you don't have anything to rebut. Yay! All right, so I'm going to close the hearing to public testimony on this file.
Hearing examiner, is it all right if I give it just some clarification?
Yeah.
Just to make sure we're okay.
That'd be great.
So it sounds like the applicant representative corrected an error in, kind of in the request, but also, but it looks like in reviewing the, the decision, the, if, to, that it would still be in line with the 12 by 20.
Okay.
That would be, that they're requesting for, for the bulk increase. So everything looks in line with, with that change.
Okay, good. Thank you. I appreciate that.
We should ask, the dimensions that the project rep stated, that's, that might be wall to wall and we typically measure the eaves, to the eaves. So I think that's what Jason and I were when we discussed this. I think we wanted to ensure that it was like eve to eve, greatest architectural projection is what we typically measure to rather than the outside wall to outside wall. So I think that might have been where the change happened when the planner did the review of it.
Okay.
I do get projects confused, so I can't say for certain because we go through a few hundred of these, but I'm pretty sure that's where that came.
Okay. Okay, so we discussed, or we touched on the Bonner County Revised Code 12-344, which talks about nonconforming structures. And that was why I asked the questions about evidence to provide for it being of disrepair based on what they had stated here, because it does say in the code, section B, "A nonconforming structure or nonconforming portion of a structure destroyed by any means may be reconstructed so as long as the reconstruction does not increase in its nonconformity. And reconstruction occurs within two years of this destruction," which I'm sure some of that is just wear and tear, and I'm willing to go outside the code for that portion of it. But you, what you did for me was you showed me that you will not be increasing the footprint of that. And to me, that's basically what the code is stating here, is yes, you can do improvement on your building as long as you're not building something bigger and better. There is that height increase, but I do believe that because of that four-foot wall, it was basically creating an unsafe situation there where a person cannot walk through in a sound, safe manner without the potential of injury. And so I do think in a situation like that, there is allowance for me to deviate from the code. So having said that, I better get back to, in the right area here. I hereby approve this project file V0024-22, a bulk and shoreline setback variance to reconstruct an existing boathouse as detailed in the applicant submitted sheet in the file entitled variance application bulk calculations, finding that it is in accord with the Bonner County Revised Code as enumerated in the following conclusions of law and based upon the evidence submitted up to the time the staff report was prepared and testimony received at this hearing. Those conclusions being, conditions apply to the property that do not generally apply, oops, sorry, that do not apply generally to other properties in the same zone, et cetera, et cetera. Conclusion two, special conditions and circumstances do not result from the actions of the applicant. Conclusion three, granting of the variance is not in conflict with the public interest in that it will not be detrimental to public health, safety, or welfare, et cetera. And I gotta go back up to where I left off. I further adopt the following findings of fact and conclusions of law as written. The action that could be taken to obtain the variance is to complete the conditions of approval as adopted. This action does not result in a taking of private property. Okay, so at this time I close file V0024-22. Thank you. All right, so we are moving on to, where are we at? File V0013-23, a variance shoreline setback. The applicants are requesting a variance for a 25-foot setback from the shoreline where 40 feet is required, as well as a bulk increase to an existing boathouse. The parcel is .98 acres. The property is zoned recreation. The project is located off Bull Trout Road in Section 3 Township 60 North, Range 4 West, Boise Meridian. Turn it over to you, Alex. Oh, I have no conflict of interest with this project, sorry. I didn't say that real quick. Sorry. Now it's yours.
Thank you, bottom hearing examiner, Alex Fann, playing staff for the record. Today, we're going to talk about a shoreline setback variance and a bulk increase of a boathouse in Coolin, Idaho. The site is located off Bull Trout Road. Applicants are Craig and Jill Looper, and the applicants are represented by Jeremy Grimm of Whiskey Rock Planning. This is the attached site plan, showing the increase in bulk and the increase in the Background of the site, the site is .98 acres. It is a plotted lot. The land use designation is resort community and the zoning is recreation. The access is off of Bull Trout Road, a privately owned and maintained road. It does contain slopes, it does have mapped wetlands, and does have waterfront, it fronts Priest Lake, and is within floodplain, it's within the floodplain in zone AE. The site is served by an individual lake pump system. The sewage is through an individual system with a community drain field. Fire is provided by East Priest Lake Fire District. Power is Northern Lights Incorporated, and the school district is West Bonner School District Number 83. These are the following sections of code that this file was reviewed against. These are the agencies that were routed on July 13th. No project-specific comments were received. We received a comment from the Idaho Department of Environmental Quality, but it was their typical form letter. And all other agencies did not respond. So the first variance is, or the variance criteria is for special conditions to describe whether conditions apply to the property. That do not apply generally to other properties in the same zone vicinity, which conditions are a result of lot size, shape, topography, or other circumstances over which the applicant has no control. The applicant stated, per variance file 0012-20, it has been confirmed that the subject parcel slopes steeply and is encumbered by rock outcroppings. I believe Jeremy's going to touch more on that variance file. It was with the same owners on the same property. So he'll touch more on that in his, in his presentation. The staff responded, the property does have topographical, topographical constraints, excuse me. The property can be characterized by steep slopes of 0 to 30, 30-plus percent. The property contains frontage on Priest Lake and is located in special flood hazard area AE. It does contain wetlands and does appear to have rock outcroppings, which can all limit development on the subject parcel. The next criteria is to explain how special conditions and circumstances do not result from the actions of the applicant. Again, I believe Jeremy's going to touch on that in his, in his presentation. The staff response, the subject property has not been changed or altered by the property owners. Property was obtained by the applicants in 2018. The property owners did not construct the original boathouse and would like to improve it. The boathouse was constructed in 1956. Bonner County Revised Code does not allow for the new construction of boathouses to be built within the setbacks or within the floodplain. Per BCRC 12-344, nonconforming structures that were built prior to November 18th, 2008 are considered legally nonconforming. The boathouse was not constructed by the applicant and was built before November 18th, 2008. However, 12-344A states no such nonconforming use shall be enlarged or increased nor extended to occupy a greater area of land than was occupied at the effective date of adoption or amendment of this section, except where otherwise noted in the subchapter. This would be considered a legal nonconforming structure per BCRC 12-344, and existing legal nonconforming structures may be improved. The third and final criteria, explain how granting this variance is not in conflict with the public interest in that it will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, welfare, or materially interest to properties or improvements in the vicinity of the subject parcel. The applicant has stated that this will not be in conflict with public interest, as shown in the previous variance that was approved in this, for this property. Staff response, no agency comments were received at the time of the staff report that indicated that granting this variance for reduced setbacks and bulk increase will have a negative impact on public health, safety, or welfare. We received seven public comments, six after the staff, staff report was published. The common themes of those comments had to do with the views and aesthetics of Priest Lake as long, as well as the character, property values, and CCNRs. Staff concluded that this project is consistent with the Bonner County Revised Code. As a result of setback requirements per the Bonner County Code and the natural features on the lot, the building envelope is restrictive, which makes developing the lot challenging. Granting the variance will allow the applicant to develop their property similarly to other surrounding properties. Surrounding properties have increased the bulk and have improved their boathouses, which are considered, considered legal and nonconforming structures. The applicant did not construct their boathouse. It was constructed in 1956. The Bonner County Revised Code does not allow for the new construction of boathouses. However, bulk increases and improvements for legal nonconforming structures are allowed per BCRC dash, or, excuse me, BCRC 12-344. The conditions of approval as proposed or amended will ensure that the granting of this variance will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare, or materially interest to properties or improvements in the vicinity of the subject parcel or lot. And the conditions of approval, only the development highlighted, expanded boathouse development, as shown on the site plan, has been reviewed for variant standards. All other development shown must comply with Bonner County Revised Code accepting the modified building envelope herein. The granting of this variance shall not supersede any deed restrictions. A floodplain development permit shall be filed with the Bonner County Planning Department prior to development. A building location permit shall be filed with the Bonner County Planning Department, and a stormwater management plan shall be required for all new building, construction, or development which occurs on or within 300 feet of a slope with 15% or greater incline. And if you have any questions for me, I can answer them at this time.
I do. So in your analysis, you stated that surrounding properties have increased the bulk and have improved their boathouses, which are considered legal and nonconforming structures. How many of those properties have done that?
That.
I believe it's 16.
Okay, 16?
There we go. Okay. And then you also stated, in response to, where did I see this? Section, part B of the conditions under the standard reviews, at the end there you wrote, "This would be considered a legal nonconforming structure per BCRC 12-344, and existing legal nonconstruction, nonconforming structures may be improved." Where did you find that they may be improved in the code? Or how did you come up with that interpretation, actually, be a better way to say it?
So they may be improved by, in terms of rebuilding what was there before, that's the purpose of the variance though, is to ask for, ask for a variance for what is, from what is already there to be improved upon and anything that needs to be, if any bulk is being increased or anything, that's what the variance is for.
Okay. So because in the code, you know, it says that no such conforming structure, a nonconforming structure, sorry, A says, "No such nonconforming structure may be enlarged or altered in any way which increases its nonconformity." But you're saying improvements not necessarily including increases. Is that what you're talking about? I'm just wondering how improvement fits into this where it's not allowed to increase its nonconformity? Like what improvements are you, were you referring to?
So they're going to be, from what I understand, they're going to be rebuilding the boathouse and increasing the bulk within it. So they're going to be extending it out. I don't remember off the top of my head how far, but that's what I mean with.
So the improvement you're referring to is that extension?
Yes.
Right? Okay. Sorry, third degree.
You're fine.
But that helped me a lot. Thank you very much. Okay, that was the only questions I had.
Okay. I'm going to pull up, in this presentation here.
And then when he's ready, Jeremy, you're welcome to come up.
One more time. Full screen mode. Okay, we'll do it on the small screen, but. Hi there, Jeremy Grimm for the record, representing the Loopers here on this variance request, owner of Whiskey Rock Planner Planning. And we're here today looking at 126 Bull Trout Road in Coolin, Idaho. And specifically, the Loopers have owned this property, as was referenced by staff, that used to be a State of Idaho lease lot, and they are seeking a variance to the shoreline setback of 25 feet, where 45 feet, 40 feet is the standard, and bulk and, a bulk increase to this existing nonconforming boathouse. The subject parcel is Hunt Creek Block 1, Lot 18, and it has been shown to have exceptional grade. There is a previous variance in 2020 that was approved for this property that I'll go into. And a unique aspect of this application is although the Loopers were granted a fairly significant variance, they ended up not utilizing it all because the design of the house, so they didn't actually need it all in that location. So we're really seeking a reciprocal transfer from what was previously granted in variance 001220 to apply to this boathouse area. Many other lots in the vicinity have been granted variances and had similar improvements made. And finally, no far, part of, or fault of existing staff, but in 2020, VAR 001220, that application did include the request to extend this boathouse, but due to administrative error, it was never included in the approval, and I'll go into some of that in just a second here. So that's sort of the highlights and what we're doing here. For the vicinity map, it's, parcel's located on the east side of. For the vicinity map, it's, uh, parcel's located on the east side of Priest Lake, as is shown here. Uh, this is the subject parcel, and you can see the boathouse in that lower left corner there. And, um, this is the file, um, and I apologize for the program not letting me expand all the way here, but this was, um, the actual application and the staff report from, uh, V 001220, and in that original application, um, there were some plans there. And on the left, I have the plans that are in that application, and on the right, I have it blown up here. And what you'll see, let's see if, do you see the mouse?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, look at that. Um, right here, this, so this gray area is what they were seeking the variance for. You'll see the boathouse, and there's this gray area here that, um, they had originally included in their site plan, uh, in that original request. Unfortunately, due to noticing, um, errors, uh, from former staff, um, that never got into the application, so they had to proceed without that. So, uh, this has always been their intent for this, this property, and you'll see why in just a moment. Looking at the actual decision, um, the Loopers received, uh, uh, approval of this variance on, uh, August 26th, 2020. Um, that was for the house portion, um, and, uh, there were conclusions of law that staff referenced and I referenced in the application, uh, those findings of fact that, uh, conclusion one, two, and three, um, that we feel nothing's changed on the property, so those conclusions should still stand. So when we look at what was approved, uh, this is, uh, this red area is where the Loopers originally, uh, thought that they were going to, uh, construct their, their primary or the residence on this lot. And you'll see that little, uh, red sort of polygon triangle there. This was, um, the area that was, uh, approved but unutilized, um, in variance 001220. And some better depictions of it. So this is an actual overlay of what, what was actually constructed, the as-built. And you'll see that the sort of gold-yellow there, house and deck, um, didn't encroach, I've overlaid what was granted as a variance there, so it didn't use up much of that variance area that they had originally been approved for. I have a better depiction, uh, here, which kind of shows this red triangle trapezoid polygon. This is the area that they had been approved to encroach all the way up to, that they never utilized. They actually downsized their house to make it a little bit smaller. So it's really this red area, which, uh, is larger than the green area. The green area is what we're here seeking a variance for today, and, uh, you'll see why in just a second. You can see on this, this, the, uh, the boathouse is, uh, grating and dilapidated. You can see right there, the roof is half ripped off and rotting, um, so it's, it's, it's not an attractive nuisance, but it's just about to become an attractive eyesore and very dilapidated. Um, it is, um, very close to, uh, flood hazard AE zone. Um, any work done in there would obviously trigger a, uh, floodplain development permit, but, um, what this yellow square polygon is showing is this is the area that we're seeking to transfer the previous, um, variance approval to. And there's not really a mechanism to do that, but I thought I'd try to explain it just so you understand sort of the justification for this. So this is, um, a, a very good diagram. This is Looper put together for us. And the colors, you can see in yellow and peach, the existing boathouse there. And what they're really seeking is just to do the addition, so the green and light green on the right there. So that addition would take it from a 25-foot, uh, deep boathouse to a, um, about a 35-foot deep boathouse. And, um, the existing walls, uh, are 13 feet, and they would be 14 after. And the reason for that is because if you have a boat or been on a boat, you'll recognize that these boathouses, these historic boathouses were built for the old sort of motor in the back, and, uh, they really don't function well, uh, safety reasons. You walk in, you hit your head on rafters and nails and for other reasons, um, so they're really, you know, that extra foot allows a proper, modern-day boat to pull in. And that sort of red outlined area is where the, uh, expansion, uh, increase in this boat bulk area would occur, boathouse. Um, so I mentioned that, uh, the Loopers helped document, uh, numerous other boathouses on Priest Lake that, uh, have been granted variances or exceed the existing code. Here's just a few examples, and I, I think what's worth noting here is that the Loopers aren't looking for a, a two-story or, you know, living area. They, they simply just want to make it a functional boathouse for their property. Um, and here's, here's another slide of some, some boathouses, um, and as you can see, some have porches, number seven there, or some have bedrooms, number 10. But in general, um, there've been numerous boathouses, uh, that have been granted this, um, flexibility. And I, I do want to speak to that, that one section of code, um, 12-344, you know, that's, that's precisely what a variance is for, you know, code, just like the zoning says, you know, you can't, um, for a setback, for example, you know, setback's 15 feet. The variance is to seek relief for portions of code that make, um, deviations impossible without it. So, um, as we mentioned, there are, um, conditions that are unique to the property. No fault of the property owners that they, they didn't construct this original boathouse, and it's not in conflict with the public health and safety or injuries to properties or, uh, improvements in the vicinity. So in conclusion, um, we've got very steep grades on this property. The original setback variance approved, was approved, uh, but staff, who's no longer in the county, missed the boathouse request on that, so this is sort of a, a second bite at the apple here. Uh, always their original intent. The area approved under variance 001220, um, wasn't fully utilized, so they have, effectively, you could look at as they have leftover area that could have built that they didn't, um, and they would release that, obviously, if, um, this is granted. And requesting this reciprocal transfer, um, is, is what we're here for through a variance. The findings of facts from V A R 001220 haven't changed, and we feel it's reasonable to request, uh, this to accommodate a modern boat size in this boathouse. So with that, um, yeah, I'd answer any questions you have.
So, back to that original variance, um, you were talking about the boathouse being included. Was that included in the original, in their original application?
Yes, it was.
Do you have a copy of that?
This is a copy.
That is it?
Yeah. And, um, that, that was where staff didn't notice, um...
That little chunk.
A chunk, uh, that's got the circle on it. So as a result, the, the board couldn't act on that, but they did.
Okay.
They did grant the rest of the variance there. And the Loopers were pretty, pretty, um, uh, I mean, they were very upset, but they, they were pretty calm about it and just realized there's a process here, so.
So, alright, I'll just get up.
I might be able to.
This line here, oh, this is just your flood.
Yeah.
So the original variance then, if it had been included, if that chunk had been included, where would it have, what area, like, would it have been right at the end of that boathouse to the extension?
Yep, that's exactly what, um, this photo shows, is where it would have been, yeah.
Okay. Okay. And then you'd mentioned earlier, um, 16 other properties that have, um, improved their boathouses and increased in bulk.
12, I'm sorry.
12, okay.
Yeah. As is referenced, uh, in the presentation.
And some of those, you said, did get variances for those, as far as you know?
Yes, and, or don't meet the standards. I, I presume due to the age of some of them and the nuance that, um, uh, many of them have received variances.
Okay. I've covered all my questions. So I did, one question I did have too, um, with that original variance, um, you were talking about the slopes and the topographical conditions being only applying to that property, but I can see that the other properties that you're using to show that they had done improvements to their own boathouses also have those slopes?
Mm-hmm.
So are you referring to different conditions than the slope and lot shape or anything, or?
What I'm, what I'm referring to is the previously granted variance for this property, uh, for, uh, setback, uh, from the 40-foot setback. Included on the right side here, these are the findings of facts of Bonner County. At that time, that conditions applied to the property that do not generally apply to others in the same zone of vicinity.
So you're, you're basing yours because of that approval?
Yeah, exactly, because I don't, uh, nothing's changed on the property.
Okay.
Other than the house has been built since then.
Okay.
So I assume there wouldn't be new conditions, so it's, they'd be conflicting with these conclusions.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Or conclusions.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Took care of helping. Thank you. Okay. Okay, I'm not, again, I'm not going to repeat the rules of testimony. We've already done that for everybody that's right here. Is there anyone, um, that has a written statement that they would like to enter into the record at this time? Any supporting public testimony in person or online? Any neutral testimony in person or online? Any opposing testimony in person or online? Nobody raised online at all?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay. Is there anyone in the audience who did not sign up to speak who would like to enter any comments into the record? Okay. Alright, so again, applicant has nothing to rebut, so I am going to close the hearing to public testimony. Okay, so this was a different, um, application in the sense that, um, I was not aware about the, uh, previous variance, how much of that, um, excluded that boathouse. But the, that there was the intent there, and I do, did see in the original application it was meant to be there. And so, um, I can understand, uh, that the Loopers would like to get this reconciled and, uh, but I was hesitant based on the code at first. And because of that, again, going back to the, um, "No such non-conforming structure may be enlarged or altered in any way which increases its non-conformity." That code, I, I do believe, again, has been put in place to, um, you know, protect the initial footprints of the items that were put there that the code would not allow now. But there is that opportunity to deviate from that, and I think that, um, Jeremy has shown that aside from the fact that the, the building's roof is in need of repair, there are other boathouses, other property owners out there that have improved upon their boathouses, and that they have done, basically exactly what the Loopers are asking to do as well. And so, um, that kind of leads me, which this may be off-topic, but it kind of leads me into that community design aspect of the comprehensive plan, which probably doesn't apply here, but I'm gonna say it anyway. I, um, I like to see that if some neighbors are getting to do something, all the neighbors get to do it within reason. And I think they've proven here that they are doing that within reason. They're not asking for some exorbitant giant condo to be stuck in the middle there. They are just asking to make improvements upon an existing boathouse. They're not even asking to tear the whole thing down and start all over, but they are asking to just make those improvements, and I do believe the code allows that, um, leeway. So, having said all of that, flabber on. I approve this project file V 0013-23 for a 25-foot setback from the shoreline where 40 feet is required, as well as a 53% bulk increase to an existing boathouse, finding that it is in accord with the Bonner County Revised Code, as enumerated in the following conclusions of law, and based upon the evidence submitted up to the time the staff report was prepared and testimony received at this hearing. Those conclusions being, conclusion one, "Conditions apply to the property that do not generally apply to other properties in the same vis- zone or vicinity," et cetera, et cetera. Conclusion two, "Special conditions and circumstances do not result from the actions of the applicant." Conclusion three, "The granting of the variance is not in conflict with the public interest in that it will not be detrimental to public health, safety, or welfare, or materially injuries to properties or improvements in the vicinity of the subject parcel lot." I further adopt the following findings of fact and conclusions of law as written. "The action that could be taken to obtain the variance is to complete the conditions of approval as adopted. This action does not result in a taking of private property." Okay, so at this time, I close file V 0013-23. There we go. Okay. Thank you. So are there any schedule reminders, updates, or announcements?
When's our next hearing?
September...
You don't have an advance this month?
Yeah, September 6th. That's what I have written down too.
We received a number of new applications in the last week, so the...
Yee-haw.
I know there's one M O D file that we're not going to bring before you because it was a modification to a, uh, a decision that was made by the zoning commission last year, and so it felt more appropriate to go back to them because they know the details of that file.
Thank you.
And, other than that, we have a couple other C U P modifications and then some other C U Ps that'll be before you here in the next couple of months.
Cool.
Kind of a heads up. We had seen kind of a, a decline in total applications, but, uh, in the last week, we're starting to see it pick up again, which is great. We made some changes to some staffing, so we decided not to replace Tyson Lewis whenever he left earlier this year, about six months ago. So not to replace him, and then we turned our permit techs into planning technicians, so they do some more administrative files. I think you met Rob last time, right, winning him, so he's a planning tech. We typically don't give them a lot of hearing files, if anything, maybe one at a time, so you might see a couple other planning techs in the next six months, two years, they kind of learn their role. But they're gonna focus mainly on administrative files, only, all the hearing files to Alex back there. He's got broad shoulders, so. Yeah. Is there any, um, one thing we could add to these agendas is any kind of training to kind of help explain any of the, either state code or our code, and kind of go over some details with you, because I know we don't have, we don't typically have time to do that outside of a meeting, so.
Yeah.
Either if you want to do that in a meeting like this, in an open session, or if you want to schedule a time to meet with planning staff, or, or always open to kind of help explain code, so.
Yeah, unfortunately, half the time, my questions come in my head the night before.
Oh, yeah.
Like, I'll actually literally go to bed and then be laying there, and all of a sudden be like... sudden, be like, "Oh, that's a good question," and I write that down.
We all fall asleep thinking about planning, so we get it.
"Oh, why did I think..." And I apologize if I was like, "Rear on ya."
No, you're fine. I was kind of thinking, I'm like, "I might not be the one to have that answer."
Yeah. Because I was taking... I was trying to... I was thinking about what Travis had said before, that I need to give a little bit more of my opinion of this. So, I was digging into it a little bit more these last couple of days. And then that's where I saw some of the words, and I'm like, "Okay, where did they come up with that?" So, then I thought, "Am I digging too much into this?"
No, no. The more you deliberate, the more defensible your positions are, or your decisions and appeals and/or judicial reviews.
Good.
So, it gives us more pause when it's a... There's no explanation behind the decision...
Yeah.
Because then it goes to court, and like, "Well, they didn't say why they came to that conclusion, they just said they did."
Yeah.
So, they can oftentimes kick it back with a "give us a more detail" type scenario. So, it's always... And we struggle with this with the commissioners as well. And so, it's always a... There's a back and forth as to how much deliberation, how much explanation do you give? It's a lot easier when there's a group of people because they can sit and chat.
Oh, yeah. That's the other part for me is...
You're sitting by yourself, but I think you're coming into the role just fine, so.
I'm sitting here going, "Okay, me, myself, and Irene, where are you two?"
You're doing a much better job of talking, doing some deliberation.
Cool, thanks. I was trying to put that down when I was going through this. I actually, as I was reviewing through them, I was writing down points that I thought were positive or negative, and then that seemed to help more, coming up with questions and stuff like that.
Sure. Okay, sounds good.
Cool.
No other staffing changes that I can think of? I like to inform governing bodies whenever we have staffing changes so that if you've seen their faces, you can at least tell you that you might have seen them, so.
So, I don't kick them out of the room?
Right. Like, "Who are you?" No. So, I can't think of anything else. We have a number of kind of good files or fun files coming before you in the next month or two, so it'll be interesting as we... I don't know. That's what's fun about planning, is that like...
Yeah.
Like, you get an animal establishment, some are kind of cut and dried, and there's others that are like, "Wow, okay, this is a completely different idea." So, we'll see how those come along.
The other thing that they're coming up with, so that Providence subdivision...
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
...to zoning. Like, yeah, why zoning? Take a look at their hearing that tomorrow.
Oh, good.
So, if you want...
You want to either zoom in...
Yeah, I think I will on that one.
Even on YouTube, it starts at 5:30 tomorrow evening.
Okay.
So, I'm sure they'll... I think we're downstairs for that one, right?
It's a learning opportunity, because you saw it.
Yeah.
There's a lot here, I think. And so, knowing what you know and then seeing how they handle it.
And there's five people on that board, so hopefully they make a lot of deliberation on this before they make a decision on it, so.
Yeah.
And then they only make a recommendation to the board on subdivision files. That's the way the code's written. It's kind of weird.
So, then the commissioners hear it again. Do they hear the whole thing again? Oh, wow.
So, it'll be three hearings, you, the zoning commission, and the board.
Wow. Time's...
Cool. Any other questions for staff? Okay, that's all I got.
Good, good. Jenny, y'all good?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, so I'm going to announce that we are adjourned until the next planning hearing on September 11.